To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ciana? Councilmember Glasser?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent? Here. Mayor Long?
Here. Thank you, Ciana. Our presentation tonight is introduction of our new police chief, Chief Casey Day. Welcome, and if you would like to say a few words, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you ma'am. I would just like to express my excitement for the opportunity to be here in Fortuna and to lead the Fortuna Police Department. I bring with me almost twenty years of experience from the Anderson Police Department in Shasta County, primarily serving as a progressively community-oriented policing agency. And so when I picked Fortuna, or just picked Fortuna, I basically spent a lot of time in the community, just getting to know people and doing my research on the police department here. And my understanding is that the Fortuna Police Department has some very successful programs. And I'm just appreciative and honored to have the opportunity to add to those successes and to bring a fully functional community policing model to the city of Fortuna. I'm honored and humbled, and thank you very much for having me.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you for many, many years.
Yes, thank you.
Oral comments from the public. Ciana, we do have one caller. We do. We currently have Kent on the line. Kent, can you hear me? You're not muted, Kent. You should be able to join the conversation.
Okay, thank you for my opportunity to speak. This is on non-agendized items, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I wish to just introduce myself to you. Kent Swatzky. I'm Executive Director of the Taxpayer League. And we have a topic later which I will speak on specifically, but I want to talk a little bit about generally what the Taxpayer League is supporting. The town of Trinidad wished to up their tax. They had a four-year sunset. And they have, I believe it's a three-quarter cent tax. And we offered for them to have an eight-year sunset. They declined that. They did accept our offer to help promote and endorse their tax. They wanted to keep that at four years. During the past election, the Fire Department in Arcata went for a rather large increase as far as their assessments. And we came out against that one, and of course, that one was defeated. They're going to put that back on again. And it's probably going to be the same tax, and hopefully, we will defeat it again because it was a regressive tax. We're looking toward people who are fiscally responsible, the same as cities Trinidad is, and we feel you folks are. The city of Eureka is anticipating putting on an additional half-cent sales tax to what they have. And I think they're trying to switch that over from a general sales tax, from a specific tax to a general. We are not going to be able to endorse that. We most likely will fight that particular tax. It was talked about one time about coming out with it with no sunset. We're always against the sunsets. Our philosophy is the taxpayers should have an opportunity to both vote for you folks on the council and also vote on specific tax measures. So a little bit later, I will speak as far as your tax measure. But I thank you for the opportunity, at least let you know what the Taxpayer League is. We're different now. We're here to help. And we're not from the government. We're here to help. And we're here to endorse taxes that are responsible and fiscally show the needs that the people wish to have. And we realize there's taxes that need to be happening. In two years, we're hoping to go ahead and do a possible repeal and replace the Measure Z tax and have some of that money be delegated back to you folks also. So thank you for my opportunity to speak on the Humboldt County Taxpayers League.
Thank you, Kent. Thank you for joining us tonight. We will move on to our calendar. We have three items. City Council minutes from June 15th and 24th, report of disbursements and the ratification of the City Council action on June 24th, 2020 to authorize participation in the California Public Utility Commission's self-generation incentive program, Tesla, as our visitor, and authorize measure to enter into necessary agreement by construction of proposed battery base. Does anyone wish to pull anything? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Make a motion. We accept consent. Calendar items one and two.
One, two, three.
One, two, three, I'm sorry.
Thank you. You guys are slow tonight.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Ciana. Councilmember Glasser? You're muted, Councilmember Glasser. Got you. One more time.
The motion did my items one through three, or did these two items one through twelve?
One through three.
One through three.
Yeah, second the motion.
The motion was, the motion was seconded by Councilmember Stanfield. Do you vote yes? Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
And really quick, I did see that there's another member from the public that joined that may have tried to get on during the non-agendized item. If you'd like to offer them an opportunity to say something at this time?
Yes, if they would like to make a comment under public comments, please have them do so.
Okay, I don't see the hand raised, but I do see the phone number 707-682-6039. Would you like to identify yourself in the council? I'll take that as a no, and I'll look for a star nine. If you're on the call right now and you're a member of the public and you're muted, star nine will raise the hand to allow me to identify that you'd like to speak to the council. And there it is. You can go ahead and speak. Are you there?
Yes, I'm there.
Okay, can you identify yourself, please?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Walt Wilson, resident of Fortuna. I want to thank Mayor Long, the council members, and all Fortuna staff for taking care of the city of Fortuna during these very stressful times. Your dedication is just amazing, and we owe you all a great deal. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Walt. We appreciate you. All right, moving on to council business. Our first item is consideration and approval to the voters of the extending the expiration date of the current three-quarter cent transaction and use tax. So do you want me to read all of these, or do you want to do a staff report, Merritt?
I'll provide the staff report, and then you can read those. So essentially, the item is on the upper consideration is the consideration of a ballot measure for the November 3rd, 2020 election to extend the current three-quarter cent transaction and use tax for an additional twelve years beyond March 31st, 2025, or to consider a ballot measure to extend the three-quarter cent transaction and use tax beyond the scheduled March 31st date until repealed by the voters or the city council. So there are two options. Currently, Measure E is set to expire in March of 2025. Staff has indicated that if the ballot measure is not extended, reductions to staff would be necessary over the next four years to achieve a balanced budget. The city council previously asked that staff proceed with the steps necessary to put a measure on the ballot to extend the transaction use tax with no sunset. But staff brought this back to the city council for consideration, and staff now is considering the two options, one with a sunset, one without. This item was also taken, an item was taken for discussion to the Measure E committee, which debated whether or not to recommend that the council extend the transaction and use tax and whether or not, if they did opt to extend it, whether or not it should include a sunset date or not. The Measure E committee recommended moving forward with, without a sunset date and going for reauthorization in 2020. The Humboldt County Taxpayers League has stated that they would oppose any ballot measure with, without a sunset date. So I was glad to see that Mr. Swatzky was on the call, so he can provide feedback to the council directly. As I stated earlier, the city is considering two options for the length of the extension. The first option would be to extend the tax for twelve years beyond 2025 to March 2031st, 2037. And the second option would be to extend the tax indefinitely until repealed by voters or by a vote of the city council. Including the staff report, our two attachments. Attachment A is a resolution with the proposed ordinance extending the tax for a period of twelve years beyond the March 31st date beyond the March 31st, 2025 date. Attachment B is a resolution and ordinance that extended indefinitely. With either option, the city council or the voters through the initiative referendum process may rescind the ordinance or repeal the tax at any point in the future. All the other elements included in the municipal code that govern the transaction use tax would remain the same, including the requirements of a residence oversight committee as a way to review the expenditures of the sales tax and ensure that funds are spent consistent with community service priorities. The proposed resolutions, either one would authorize the mayor to repair and file an argument in favor of the measure on behalf of the council. The argument could also be signed by representatives of bona fide associations of citizens, individual voters who are eligible to vote, and members of the city council. The mayor would also be authorized to file a rebuttal argument in the event that an argument is filed against the measure. The staff recommends that the city council exercise this option. Should the council choose not to authorize a mayor or another member of the council to file an argument on its behalf, another group could do so. And only one argument can be filed in support or against a measure. It may be selected to appear within the voter's guide. So I think it's important that the, you know, the mayor has control of that, or at least a member of the council. Without the extension of the three-quarter cent transaction and use tax, the city would return to an operational deficit situation. And the city would, again, as stated earlier, would look towards balancing the budget prior to 2025. I think what's important to recognize is that we don't want to end up in the situation where the revenue from this tax, we get right up to the year that expires. Staff thinks it would be irresponsible to do that, and we want to make a plan. And so that's why this item is coming now, and this is why I think the council is considering moving forward with this in the 2020 election. So with the two attachments included, if the council does elect to extend for an additional twelve years, it should approve the attached ordinance 202743 and adopt Resolution 2020-26, both of which are included with the report. Or if it elects to extend it for an indefinite period, it should approve ordinance 2020744 and adopt Resolution 2020-27, included with the staff report. Both the ordinance and resolution should be approved by separate motions, and each requires a two-thirds vote. And so with that, that concludes my staff report. I don't know, our city attorney, Ryan Plots, is on the line, and he may have additional clarifications. Ryan?
At this time, it sounded great, Merritt, and I'm happy to address any questions of the council.
So Merritt, I was finally able to get a hold of Kent today. He left his cell phone in Willow Creek, which was part of the issue of not being able to reach him. We did not understand the Taxpayers Association offer correctly. They are saying that they would want to repeal and replace effective January 1st. So we would only gain about seven or eight years because they're not talking about continuing it from 2025 plus twelve. They've been talking about repeal and replace, so it would be twelve years from 2021. So Kent is on here to talk a little bit more about that. He did say, I said I wasn't overly excited about that because we weren't only gaining much more than what we already have. He said, what if we took it out to fourteen years? So that would give us an actual full eight years past what we have going forward. Not what, not, not eight years past 2025, but eight years past January 2021. So I'm not sure how we feel about that, but Kent is on the line to talk about the Taxpayers Association part of it. If we want to have him join us now, or does the council, anyone else have any questions for Merritt before we hear from Mr. Swatzky?
Maybe one clarification, Sue, and that is if you were to change the dates. I just want to hear from our city attorney if he thinks that we could revise those with the way it's published. I think we can, but maybe, Ryan, you could just clarify what steps would be necessary if the council does opt to adjust the timelines in either of those resolutions or ordinances.
Yeah, we could amend the ordinance on a motion to restate the expiration date and then ordinance to so reflect. And that could be fine. It just need to be part of the motion that's made.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. Does anyone else from the council have any comments, or we hear from Mr. Swatzky? All right, Ciana, do you want to put Kent through? Yes, Kent is unmuted.
Am I on?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, so I apologize if there was any kind of misunderstanding. I reached out to Merritt in advance, you know, this and had some conversations regarding it. I took the proposition of repeal and replace and making it a twelve-year tax rather than the eight to my board. That's the one that I can definitely go with and make commitment to. And so what do you get from us then? Well, in consideration for that, you get our endorsement. We're willing to be a group that takes donations. A hundred percent of those donations will be used to buy buttons or get signs. I'm happy to appear at your functions and your meetings and endorse what we're proposing doing here. And of course, that means we're doing the opposite of coming out against it. We're also going to be willing to go ahead and, and of course, Sue could write up, you know, whatever they want to write up, whatever you want to have. But we'd also be willing to put our name on there if you'd like to have our endorsement for that. So that's, that's what we bring to the table. We want to do a deal with you, but this is the deal I've been given permission to go ahead with. Sometimes it's best to take what I consider to be a sure thing and happy to work with you again in the future. I appreciate your attorney's response, that he's able to adapt this to what I felt, Merritt and I had come to an agreement on. Again, might have been my misunderstanding. I'm not saying it was Merritt at all. But that's what I can bring to you now. Otherwise, if you go longer than that, then I'm going to have to take it to my board. And I can't guarantee exactly what their response would be. But this is a sure thing. And as I spoke with Sue, you know, if we go down this one and you have a twelve years from the, you know, the date that it starts, and we go down at four years or eight years, and possibly then we go sixteen years more. It's just, it kind of needs to be an increment. And for those of us who appreciate how fiscally responsible you've been, that's why we're doing this. As you're aware, last time you put this in effect, I came down there and I wasn't Executive Director, but the Taxpayer League did not come out against you. It didn't put signs out. And of course, I spoke in favor of that personally. This time, I'm willing to go ahead and wear the hat of the Taxpayer League and help, I guess, reward you for your good fiscal responsibility and do some good work here. So I'm asking you to work with us and accept our offer. Anything else, like I say, will be, I can't make promises. Also happy to reach out. I like going to the neighborhood watch people. Have them work with us, help them put out signs. And I'm willing to put some time into this because we do wish to work with the city of Fortuna, the friendly city. Do you have any question for me? I'll stay on the line if you do.
Thank you, Kent. Does anyone have any questions for the speaker?
I do. So does, if we accept this offer, does that mean that we'll get twelve years from next April when it expires or from Election Day? How does that work?
That's a question for your attorney. I believe if it goes into effect January 1st after November election, then you would have twelve years from that time. But it depends on how you word this thing, and I think that would be your attorney's discretion as far as how to word it.
Okay.
Mayor Long, if I could just kind of interject here for a moment. So right now, the way that it's written it up, it would extend it twelve years beyond the current expiration date. And I think what Mr. Swatzky is speaking about is it would be twelve years from the election. So that means an effective extension of eight years. So originally, the transaction use tax was for an eight-year period, and essentially, this would be one more eight-year period if the twelve years were approved in 2020.
And that's correct. So the current tax has an expiration date of March 31st, 2025. So it remains in effect. There's no need to repeal it and replace it with the current version. We would just be simply amending the termination date to extend it for a period of time that the council agrees upon.
So by extending it eight years, would technically give us a twelve-year sunset?
That's, that's.
So what does the council think about all this?
I have a question. Repeal and replace, so if it fails, we don't lose it?
We wouldn't repeal and replace. We would, twelve years if we just added eight years to our existing date. So we wouldn't have to repeal and replace. We would just add eight years instead of twelve years. And that gets us to the same spot.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. If the voters ultimately do not approve of the tax, the ordinance to extend the expiration date is simply not approved. And what's currently in our municipal code would remain through March 31st, 2025.
Thank you.
So a no vote 2025, a yes vote for eight more years? Gives us a twenty, what, twenty?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three? No, it doesn't give us thirteen years, does it?
It would give us eight years beyond the current sunset date. And currently, it's March 2025 or April 2025.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with doing that. It's, we still have, we still have the 2025 cutoff date. And it allows us a few more years. If we fail this time, it allows another year to be able to do that same thing and approach the public, even if we had to do a special election.
Any other thoughts?
Did I hear Mr. Swatzky correctly, that they would put people energy behind the measure?
If you want me to respond, we definitely will do what we can to work with your people. I'll put my energy behind it. And that could be some pretty good energy. I got ability to get other people and happy to work with anybody who's in favor of this. And it also helps do, you know, put money to work and buy signage and buttons and participate. So yes, you will have some people energy behind this.
Thank you. What was the recommendation of the Measure E committee?
The recommendation of the Measure E committee, I think they see the value in looking at the city budget, that they recommend extension with no sunset. And so, you know, we didn't have a recommendation from, that, you know, or we hadn't had a discussion with the Taxpayers League at the time, so we didn't provide them with that information. And, you know, just to add a little bit more, Councilmember Stanfield is, you know, I think what staff desires is a longer timeline to work with. When you have a revenue source that's unsure, you know, it becomes harder to plan on it. So, you know, extending this for a period of eight years, sure, that gives more certainty. But I think, you know, staff has been focused in past presentations of the councils of making a longer timeline that has more certainty. So I think at this point, it's up to the council to decide, okay, you know, will, really just kind of an understanding of what the public supports would be, whether you extend it for eight or twelve years. And certainly, the Taxpayers League is, you know, an entity that the council wants to consider. But at this point, it's really the council's call and what the best move. Do we, you know, move forward with the shorter timeline and try to bring more citizens in the fold to support, or should we extend it further and perhaps make it, you know, not so much of a challenge in the future to try to pass this again in eight years? You know, so I think right now that that's, it's more of a political decision for the council.
In my speaking to some of the business owners around town, they were, they saw the value, especially in these days, in Measure E, and said that they did not envy our position in having to budget all this. But they also said that they saw the value in extending it, but they were not in favor of no sunset. They were in favor of a time limit, and then, if necessary, extend it again.
I feel the same way. I feel like as long as we're doing this properly and going along like we're supposed to, I don't think we'll have any problem each year extending it, especially since everybody's used to paying this and we're not increasing it anything. And I think people like having that little bit of security, knowing that, you know, this keeps us in line with the way they want things to go. So I'm kind of feeling the same way, that I don't think, as long as we keep doing things correctly, we will be able to redo or repass this. And I think having the Taxpayers League with us will also be a big help.
Anyone else? No other thoughts?
All right, I'll jump in again. When this first started, the, the public, and I want to say the Chamber of Commerce was really skeptical about the negative effects it would have on their business. And I don't blame them for having that kind of anxiety. I think they now know that it wasn't as catastrophic or even slightly impacted as much as they thought it was going to be. So with the track record we've had for the past years and the transparency with the E committee that we've provided for the public to have input and be aware of what's going on, we've shown as much capacity to be honest and true to our intentions. The reason for this tax was the fact that we had hoped that new businesses would come into Fortuna to provide the sales tax that was important to be able to balance our budget. It's unfortunate that there are factors that are out of our control as elected officials, with the workers' comp, medical coverage, and having elected officials in Sacramento that on their women fancy will pass taxes and obligations that are passed on to us. So we're sort of the messengers, but we're also, unfortunately, the people that have to do the beckoning call of raising more money. As we know, the number of businesses that we had hoped to come to Fortuna has not happened. It started off with a couple of good ones. But in the meantime, we haven't seen a lot of sales tax providers. So we only have one thing to fall back on, to be able to provide that revenue source of the $1.4 million to balance our budget. And I think we've done a wonderful job. I think the public has seen the successes of having additional police officers. It has made us safer. And we, that's a health, safety, and welfare issue, and we've kept our word to try to make people safe. And the uses of the, of the E money, the tax money to be able to use for putting money down towards grants that have a co-pay requirement, that has given us so many advantages in Fortuna that weren't around for the last twenty years. So that money has been benefiting the city a thousand times over. And I think that with the backing from the Humboldt Taxpayers League, that this will be something that the public will vote in favor of.
All right, well, that's three of you. So does somebody want to make a motion?
We have to get to the right page.
Yeah, I'm not sure which page it is.
Mayor Long, do, do we want to cry real quick? Because I did hear Mr. Swatzky talk about a repeal and replace. And I think what we're talking, you know, and replacing it with a twelve-year starting today. But I think what we're talking about now, or what the council's going towards, is an eight-year, or excuse me, But I think what we're talking about now or what the council's going towards is an eight-year, excuse me, an eight-year extension beyond the current sunset of 2025. I just want to clarify that because for writing this up, it's a lot more complicated. You know, the way we have it written now, you know, I prefer to see an extension of the 2025 and not a repeal and replace. And make, it seems the council's going towards an eight-year extension instead of a 12. But I just wanted to clarify that that was the support instead of doing a real repeal and replace.
Onto that.
Yeah. Yeah. If you hear me, that's a deal. Vote on this and it'd be a pleasure working with you. And I'll expect phone calls from somebody tomorrow and let me know when and how we can start to help you. If you vote for this particular thing like it sounds, you will. Thank you.
All right. Did that give you the clarification you needed, Merritt?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page because there was a subtle difference.
Okay.
In the ordinance, do we need to put the amount of years that we're going to extend it for?
Yeah. And so I think there should be a preliminary motion at this point to amend both the applicable resolution and ordinance to make the revisions to reflect the March 31, 2033 termination date. And then once the motion is made to revise the ordinance resolution, then we can take separate votes on it.
So what do we need to make the first motion say?
So could I make the ordinance and resolution numbers for attachment A again, the correct ones? And I can state the motion if one of the council members wants to move that. Siana, did you want me to give those to Ryan?
I thought you said two. My apologies. It's ordinance number 2020-743. And that goes with resolution, Resolution 2020-26.
So as to the motion would be to amend proposed ordinance number 2020-743 to provide for an extension of the current transaction and use tax through March 31, 2023, as opposed to March 31, 2025.
Twenty thirty-three. You said twenty-three.
Twenty thirty-three.
Okay. I don't want to go backwards.
Yeah, you stole a decade from us.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to amend our ordinance 2020. Dash, what was this, Yana? I don't have a number on mine.
Four-three, seven-four-three.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
Okay, so we've amended our ordinance. So now we need to adopt a resolution.
Yeah. So now that the ordinance has been amended, we should take a separate vote on the actual approval of the ordinance as amended.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2020-743.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Siana.
An ordinance of the City of Fortuna to extend the existing City of Fortuna transaction and use tax to be administered by the Board of Equalization, subject to approval of a majority of the electors voting on the tax measure at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Councilmember Glazer? Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Now we need a motion to approve 2026.
And Mayor, before we go to the actual approval of the resolution, we'll need to do a preliminary motion to amend it. And that motion would be a motion to amend Resolution 2020-26 to provide that the extension of the tax will expire on March 31, 2033, as opposed to March 31, 2037. And that would be the preliminary motion simply to amend the resolution and we can take a separate vote on the approval.
So moved.
Where are those dates?
Did I hear a second?
I'll second it. This is Glazer.
Where are those dates though? I'm not seeing them.
I think the only location it's in the, in the resolution is in the ballot question itself for the particular resolution.
Okay, so instead of 12 years, John, we're going to say eight. Okay, we're going to say eight.
Correct.
Okay, so we had a second. Yana?
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Okay, so we have as amended.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2020-26 as amended.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second, Siana.
Resolution 2020-26, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna, ordering the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Fortuna, a certain measure relating to a proposed ordinance, amending Chapter 3.13, Title III of the Fortuna Municipal Code, extending the 3/4% per-dollar transaction and use sales tax for general purposes at the general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 3, 2020, as called and proposed to the qualified electors by Resolution Number 2020-19, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis of the measure, setting the dates for arguments on the measure and requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Humboldt to consolidate said election pursuant to Section 10403 of the Elections Code. Councilmember Glazer?
I couldn't hear you when you read. Can you read that again? I'm just using you. It's yes.
Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Kent, for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having me join you. I appreciate, I look forward to working with you.
All right. Moving on to City Council discussion, priorities. Staff report from Liz, are you doing this one?
Let me just, if I, Mayor Long, if I could give an intro to this, Liz will be providing this. But my hope was we've had a lot of interest lately in some other planning items related to small wireless facilities. And so it's creating a need for us to accelerate some work on our municipal code related to small wireless facilities because there is a short timeline that's required. So our, my intention is to just briefly run through these planning priorities, let you know of some new things that are happening. And then just kind of as a, as informational to let the council know that we will be prioritizing the updated municipal codes for small wireless facilities. So with that, I'll hand it over to Deputy Director Shori and she can provide you a little bit more background.
Thanks, Merritt, and thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. So yeah, I'm just going to really briefly go over that priorities list that you have in your packet. And that was established originally by the council in 2018 at a workshop, and we've had a couple of workshops since then. And also that's the same list that is included in your monthly report. So, you know, if you have any questions or anything like that. But I will just go over some of the accomplishments. And it's in colors, color-coded. So the first section is in blue. And that shows the projects that have been completed out of that original list. And then the second section is the projects that are ongoing that we're implementing now that we're working on. And then the last section are things that have not been prioritized yet, but they've been added on, you know, onto our to-do list. Things that we know that we need to do either because of, you know, maybe some state requirement or some other kind of a need, but we just haven't, you know, they haven't been prioritized. So the significant completed projects within the last year, and there are more than that, but the last year include the short-term rental ordinance that was adopted in April. The Riverwalk rezone to allow general retail, the housing element update last year. And then we've also implemented the state's water efficient landscaping ordinance. And we've just implemented it in terms of reporting to the state on developments that require irrigated water. That's a state mandate. We still need to update the ordinance or create an ordinance in order to be able to better create something to present. But right now we are using the state's model ordinance as required by state law. And then the ongoing activities, the one I think that SB2, so we submitted that grant earlier this year and we were recently awarded it. It's a $160,000 SPD planning grant. And the exciting thing I think about that one is it does, it will create a seven-person-related pro that there are just a general need for the city or that were identified in the housing element specifications, infrastructure provision and financing opportunities analysis, adopting by right multifamily zoning standards that would eliminate conditional use permit in most cases, employee housing code, GIS layers update, accessory dwelling unit standards and design review guidelines. So we did just circulate an RFP for consultants to carry those out under the funding of that grant. And we do expect to bring that consultant award to the council on July 20. So that's moving forward and that's exciting. And the other in process, long-range projects for community development include supplemental of another housing grant that's called the LEAP grant. And it's really similar to SB2 implemented by HCD for the district planning that includes all site. But it also includes the residential area along Spring Street and a portion of Fortuna Boulevard. So there will be flexibility in looking at the housing-related component of that because it is, since it is a HCD grant, they do, it is a, needs to support and promote housing. But we do expect to be awarded that. It is an over-the-counter grant and they do have the funding. Then also will be considering rezona, the city's Newburg Road Police Facility. Food cart vending standards are kind of on the radar because we've got, because the state law in January allows food cart vending. And we do have a couple of them through this, throughout the city. So it's something that we want to be able to consider and identify standards for. We can't prohibit them outright, but we can at least consider standards. And then lastly, I think this is really the one that Merritt was alluding to. And I mentioned it in the staff report, and that is we have a request by providers to install small cell facilities in the city right-of-way. And that's something that under state and federal regulations and policies, we're not allowed to prohibit outright. And so we've been doing some research on this. And we may have an ordinance that regulates them, so we may consider an ordinance. And that's what we would like to do so that at least we can, you know, we can get in front of it and create some standards. And so this, this small cell facilities would be basically an upgrade to the facilities in the city to 5G technology. And so in that case, the service area is divided into basically smaller geographical areas. So I think in this case, they're requesting 12 or 15, 12 to 15, I don't quite remember, of the wireless facilities. And they are, they're small, so they're on, they're not like the typical towers or, I'm not sure how tall, you know, we've got one down at the courtyard, but these are on either existing light poles or on new poles that are similar to, you know, in height and look of a telephone pole. And then the antenna itself is small. It's like basically one foot wide by maybe two feet in long. And it's just placed at the top of the pole. So that's the typical configuration. And so federal law doesn't allow cities to prohibit or to create unreasonable barriers to wireless facilities. And the FCC did recently, actually in 2018, consider policies that would, you know, preempt cities from prohibiting them outright. But they did, in the policies, they did allow that cities consider aesthetic, aesthetic conditions within, you know, reasonable range, undergrounding, reasonable fees and application, an application time limit of 60 to 90 days whether the cell is on an existing structure or a new structure. So, so to have a local ordinance that would just kind of confirm that we're going to follow state and federal laws and will give us a clear process and kind of allow us to consider these facilities in, in sort of a more orderly manner. And it would allow us to establish some, you know, limited standards, mainly aesthetic standards and some fees. So other than that, we would be, you know, pretty limited. But I think just having the ordinance, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm basically done and ready to hand that back. Did you have anything to add, Merritt? Or Ryan has been familiarized with this to some degree.
Yeah. And before we give it to Ryan, our hope was not to see a number of different small wireless permit and give each one a conditional use permit. What we, I think is important right now is because we have a timeline that we have to respond to these applications, is that we, we get our framework in place in the terms of an ordinance that would update the municipal code. And then anybody who comes in would be playing by the same rules. And we have been talking to one potential applicant. They agreed to wait if the city moved forward with this process. But if we don't move forward with this process and update our municipal code, then they would submit an application right away, which we'd be required to respond to. So my hope is that council acknowledges the need to proceed with this work to update the full code. And that's really all we're looking for tonight is just acknowledgement of some of the progress that's been made and then some direction to prioritize this so that we have the framework in place for small wireless networks coming. So council would debate this in the future as a, as a part of that process.
So does anyone have questions for Liz?
Yes, I do. This is Dean. I've, I've made prior comments about the need for this city to allow public comment, which means a public meeting at Ridgemont for public to dissent. Again, any kind of placement of 5G cell towers in the City of Fortuna. If you go onto the internet and you put 5G cell towers danger and damage to human bodies, you're none of fun just one wacko wearing aluminum hat. You're going to find hundreds, if not, there are countries that have banned 5G cell towers being installed because of the, the physical threat that it has on the human body. It's considered to be a thousand times worse than the smart meters that I was chastised about and considered to be a wacko. But if you look now after so many years, the last 15 years, I wasn't just barking at the moon. There's validations of, of damaged aluminum structures that have been proven. So here you are, you're allowing a individual wearing You're allowing a individual wearing sheep's clothing to come in our city and to install things and they'll putting them up. The intentions was to network things so that every neighborhood, every block has one of them on a telephone. And you're going to saturate the public with this. And we are going to be welcoming this approach. I really have to object vehemently. And this needs to be a public meeting place. You have River Lodge available for people to sit six feet apart and let them know that there's a public opportunity to be able to express themselves. We're really shortchanging the public, our citizens, and not giving them a chance to express their constitutional right of saying no. I don't care what kind of stupid law Sacramento passes. They don't care because it's just following an agenda to be able to sell, sell this wonderful five G that's going to make you, allow you to download your computers, to download your smartphones and to make life la di da. This is been proven to be a military communication network. It is nothing that our city should be having installed, even starting. So again, I deplore you, Merritt, that however we can delay this until we can get out of the secure in place. Implore you to get out of this secure in place and let the public have a, have a chance to express their opinions. We're really, we're really not following our, our obligated rights as elected officials.
I, I appreciate your, your comments, Councilmember Glatter. And I guess my point is that, you know, one way or another, we're going to have to respond to this. And my hope would be to bring an ordinance to the council that they could consider along with a legal framework and the regulatory requirements which we're subject to. So you know, this isn't a planning priority staff is asking for. It wasn't something that staff prioritized, but it's something that we're responding to that's, that's coming our way. So again, we don't, we don't have a, a staff report before you today with a recommendation for approval of these networks. What we're recommending is that we take up the regulatory process and consider an ordinance in the future and to prioritize that action. And the only thing we're seeking direction on is, you know, to, to, to make this a priority to take up an ordinance. Otherwise, we may find ourselves in the position of having to respond to individual applications within a short period of time without having as much public debate as could be had for an ordinance. And unfortunately, I don't know when we'll be able to have public gatherings and have people in the same room. I think the council as well as staff has a strong desire to, to be able to have meetings in person. It's just unclear when that's going to be able to happen. And certainly it's not going to be before we have to respond to a submitted application for a small wireless network. So you know, unfortunately, I don't, I don't think it's a possibility to, to wait till we can have public gatherings again.
Well, whatever game play that we choose, I hope we pick the one that has the longest delay.
Does anyone else have any comments on this item? All right. So do you just need direction to bring the cell tower issue, five G issue as a priority? Is that where we're going, Merritt?
Yeah, this discussion, does a council generally agree that we should, we should take this up and try to update the municipal code rather than respond to individual applications? And it's, it's a discussion item. Uh, it's a discussion item. So we're not looking, I don't think we're motion, but generally just a discussion. And I might urge you to see if our, our city attorney has anything to add on this to Mayor Law.
Yeah, you know, I just note that the F C C, the Federal Communications Commission really has taken the aggressive stance of really regulating the field of five G deployment throughout the U S. And they've really handcuffed local jurisdictions, including states, in their ability to regulate, place conditions on the deployment of five G other than minor things such as aesthetics and the amount of towers within a defined area. They've also required cities act on an application to deploy a five G tower within a ninety day period. It's ninety days for a new facility. It's sixty days for an existing facility. So the reason that, you know, amending the municipal code is a priority is that our current proposed vendor is willing to hold back an application and, you know, hold back on commencing what the F C C calls the shot clock for, and so that the council can take up an ordinance and regulate to the extent allowed under the F C C order. If they, if we don't do that on a priority basis and they submit the application, we're put on a ninety day clock. And we're having to approve the application under our existing municipal code, which does not include all the safeguards that we could otherwise impose through an ordinance amendment. So I, I, I recommend that the council take this up as a priority measure. And when we, this comes back as a full item, we can have a more broader discussion about the things that the F C C allows us to regulate and what it does not.
Okay. Does everyone agree that that's the direction we want to go? So bringing this back for discussion and ordinance. I see Jeremy's nodding his head. Mike's nodding his head. Tammy, okay. All right. There you go. Any other questions about the items on Liz's list? Okay. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Our next item is our city manager's report.
Okay. I'd like to review the upcoming council meeting dates. So our next regular council meeting will be on July twentieth and another regular meeting on August third. We don't anticipate having any special meetings between now and then. Our next planning commission is on July fourteenth. Still, all these meetings are being planned by teleconference. We're not allowed to have public gatherings yet at this time. So unfortunately, we are still going to proceed with the Zoom or the teleconference platform. The next mystery meeting is on September fifteenth at thirty. And, and so right now that also is being planned for teleconference and the runner community recreation and park district is scheduled for August fifth. I just have a few items for the verbal report. I spent a lot of, of the time, a lot of time today with our new police chief. I'm really thrilled to be through the recruitment process and have Casey show up. You know, I think it was great. He had a minimal amount of time, less than two weeks before we gave him his contract and, and he was able to, to come over here very quickly. And he's excited to start his new position. I think Casey's very dedicated and is going to work very hard to be successful in this position. So I'm excited to, to take him around to the community. I started to introduce him to some community members today. And so I'll be trying to get around with him over the next few weeks, as well as Chief Downey will be also taking him to make introductions to law enforcement and some of our fire, fire districts. And I just, I also wanted to just sincerely thank our former interim chief, Mike Downey. He, he did an incredible job. I had a very tough period with the coronavirus coming on and a number of other things happening, big changes. But he really got the support of the department, did a good job of understanding what is, what was there. And you know, Mike was retired. He didn't have to do that. And I just want to recognize that it was a public service that he did to his community. Yes, he was paid, but it wasn't something he had to do. And I think he did a great job and it really, he really set the stage for our transition to our new chief. So I'd like to just thank Mike for that. And it was really a pleasure to work with him. We did really want to see an overlap between Chief Downey and Chief Day. And so we did sign a small, I did authorize a small professional services contract to have Chief Downey come back as a consultant and just provide advice and help with the transition with Chief Day upon request from, from Chief Day. One of the other primary items I'll be working on is completing the applications for federal assistance for response and city the expenses for the COVID related response by the city. And I will say that the state also designated an allocation for cities for reimbursement under the CARES Act proportion. So the city was allocated approximately a hundred fifty thousand for which we'll have to submit documentation of what our expenses are. So a lot of our expenses were for the police facility. And then just some of our response for supplies, materials, overtime, some weed, things like that. So those are due July tenth. There's a pretty short timeline. So we have to get something back this week. We'll be submitting that to the state. I also just wanted to let the council know that I'll be on vacation from July thirteenth to twenty third. Aaron Bemley, our finance director will be the acting city manager while I'm gone. And so if the council has anything, I'll be here through this week and gone the following week and a half. And I'd be happy to try to address any issues that I can before I leave. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Merritt. Anyone have any questions for Merritt?
Yeah, don't go out of country.
No, no plans to.
Hey, I saw that there was a painting and swearing in ceremony today. And I was watching the email for that so I could attend. And I saw it on Facebook after it happened. So.
So that was an informal ceremony. So what we'd like to do is, is, is do a formal swearing in. Chief Day would like to have his family come over. And then I also wanted to invite the council members to that. Again, I think we, we finalized with everything Casey midweek and then he showed up here today on last week and he showed up here today on Monday for his first day of work. So we didn't have a lot of time and we want to be able to do something a little bit more formal. You know, it's just unfortunate that we can't have a regular council meeting where we can, we can handle some of these items. So there will be a formal swearing in ceremony and I will let the council know when that is.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions for Merritt? All right. Moving on to future agenda items. Anything other than what we've talked about earlier? Hearing then we'll move on to council reports, Dean.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the weaponry meeting for the River Coast Energy Authority. And one of the agenda items was to vote on and pass a resolution to endorse racism equality in the River Coast Energy Authority's office, as well as supporting that, that social acceptance in the community. And all of the members of our directors board were willing to vote yes when it was asked what their vote was. I chose to abstain. So that's how the vote was. They, they, they passed the resolution. Again, I have to say that securing in place is truly getting old school for the members, the citizens of Fortuna. I'm sure you're under the same kind of long duress that we just to end that the fear of contracting the virus is something that we are gradually becoming complacent. And that's, I'm sure, shared by everybody in the United States. But once again, without any kind of knowledge about where the cases are for the central, central numbers that Dr. Frankovich provides. We really don't have an idea what cities do have a account of, of somebody being testing positive. And I really would like to have the Department of Health and Human Services maybe think about the fact that if they could break down the locations, the cities that have the counts. Maybe that might make the citizens a little more aware that, oh my gods, Fortuna has twenty five cases or maybe Fortuna has forty cases. I think I should be wearing a mask, but without any kind of knowledge. I think the citizens are assuming that there are no cases in Fortuna and they're becoming very lax. So I know she didn't pay attention to my suggestion that she take her face mask off when she was being interviewed by the single reporter in her office. And she is still talking like she's talking in a tunnel. And again, there are hearing impaired people, including me, that cannot understand squat, what's coming out of her mouth. So again, I'm asking her, take your mask off. Otherwise, don't talk. So for the people in the Fortuna, please, even the, the teenagers, I don't see teenagers wearing any masks at all. But this is something that the parents have to teach their children. If it's important to the parents, then it's important to the children. So pass that. June first, started the city's weed abatement program. I forgot to mention it last month, so I'm catching up. This is something that is complaint driven. If you have a field or a yard that if it were to catch fire and it could potentially damage a neighbor's property, fence, structure, then you are liable and you are responsible for cleaning up that, that problem. Again, this is complaint driven. We already have some regular individuals in town that have to cut their, their fields because they know they're on, on the list to watch. But if you feel your neighbor has something that could potentially harm or damage or destroy your home or your outbuildings or whatever, you can call the city and tell them there's a problem. And then Mike, I know you've been helping with this in the past when you were employed by the city. So if you want to carry the baton, when you have a chance to talk a little bit later, after I'm done talking for half an hour, then I'd like to have you on. Sue, I get to see you live. I want to thank you for the Fortuna fireworks display. It was fantastic. It was sort of like musical chairs, people driving around in town that really hadn't caught the word three, four, or five days prior to, to wait for their first boom and explosion in the air and then drive like they're possessed to try to get someplace to hop out and sit with chairs and, and watch. So I want you as the mayor, since you were on that board, let the public know what your mailing address is if they want to send you a donation. I mean, they need to know that because I want to send you a donation. Last but not least, God bless America. God bless our troops. May everyone be safe that serves the communities and makes our lives much better.
Thank you, Dean. Mike?
Have to unmute first there. Well, I wanted to follow up a couple of things from Dean. Number one, fireworks were awesome. And I know hard the committee works to put that on. And without the fundraising component this year, we fear that the funding for next year's fireworks may be in jeopardy. And I second Dean's recommendation that we make the address known for donations because I know first how hard everybody works and second, what an awesome thing it was. And I've heard people talk about, oh, in this time and especially it gave everybody a break from the drudgery of the shelter in place and the pandemic blaws, shall we say. So thank you for that. Second, I wanted to mention that I saw today some of the people working on the museum and getting ready to reopen that. And so that the depot museum will hopefully soon be ready for visitors again. And I know they have a lot of good plans for upcoming events. And I look forward to that. Third, there, this month I was, or last month was at the H cog meeting, there were a number of things come up that were important. Probably one of the most important is that Marcella Clem announced her retirement in December of twenty twenty. So we will be going into executive board meetings to begin the process of finding a new executive director. And having worked with her on both the TAC and the board, I know that she's worked hard in that position and brought some skills and things to it. And we look forward to helping her help us find a replacement. That being said, also in the meeting was the was the update on the corridor project. Some of the good news is that some of the project elements have come in under budget. And the tide gates and mitigation measures came in quite a bit under budget. And hopefully, at the October CTC meeting, there will be approximately $3 million come back to the, this region for STIP and ITIP projects. So we're hoping for that. I'm sure that Merritt will find out more about that at the next TAC meeting. Another thing is that we had some people bring up the the Mobility On Demand project. And there were a lot of skeptics and some people that were against some of the recommendations that were in the pilot study. So when it all ended up, the the Riedel representative made a motion to adopt the draft, to accept the draft study. And as they were looking for a pilot project area, she made the motion that the southern terminus, the Fortuna-Riedel area, was to be not in the pilot project, but should be left as is until the the bugs worked out of anything they decided to do. So that's how it was left. They will not be changing the transit system terminus here. And that was it for the HCOG project. As far as the weed abatement goes, I have had a little bit of experience in that project. And I was happy to see that some of the areas that were historical problem areas had had taken care of their weeds and flammable material. And those that have had to do that before, we hope that you will take the initiative and step up to the and take care of it without involving city staff and the abatement process. It makes it a lot easier for both the property owner and the city at this time especially. But I know that our code compliance officer is more than up to the task. So he is ready to jump in. And I think with that, that's all I have at this time, and I'll pass it along to Jeremy.
Thank you, Mike. Jeremy?
Thank you. I wrote my notes earlier, so bear with me. I had an F-Bid meeting scheduled for last week, but it was canceled. However, our executive director, Diana Rios, sent us a report of some wonderful news regarding F-Bid and some monies that she applied for and was granted. She was able to secure a sizable grant from Humboldt Lodging Alliance. And as things open back up, those monies will be used to attract more tourists and businesses to Fortuna. Then she got another grant. This time it was for $1,500 from the Headwaters Fund Mini Grant Round. And the County of Humboldt Economic Development was willing to match it for another $1,500 for a total of $3,000. This money will be used to help inform all businesses in Humboldt and the County of Humboldt of the reopening plan, how to do it, where to find information, support, and to cover the cost of 10,000 postcards and postage for them. She's doing a really great job. Want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and say thank you to all those that were responsible for putting on the 3rd of July fireworks. I heard from a lot of people through Facebook and social media thanking the city for the show and how much it meant to them to have a celebration of some sort and something exciting to do for a change. I was quick to agree, but also to let them know that it wasn't the city. And I believe that we have HOPS in Humboldt and the Committee for the Fortuna Fireworks Festival to thank for that. So thank you. I was sad to hear about the announcement of the cancellation of Fortuna Rodeo, but I know that those dedicated group of people did everything they could in their power to make some or part of it happen. So good job for the committee. Sorry to make a hard decision. And I'm looking forward to celebrating 100 years next year with you. So many special events and festivals and businesses have suffered due to this COVID-19, of course. And I hope everybody had a happy and safe Fourth, and I look forward to our next event and our next council meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
I don't have any meetings to report, but I would like to say that I had the opportunity to meet the new chief today, and he's really not as grumpy as his picture looks. Did bring that up, and he did tell us that he did get chewed out for about a half an hour from his mom for submitting that picture. So he said that won't happen again. So I was happy to hear that, and I think he's going to work out good. I think we, I, Merritt made a good choice. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tammy. So for fireworks, the fireworks were actually made possible by all the businesses that have donated over the years. We had built up a slush fund in our account. And so it was kind of like the committee thought that it would be a wonderful gift to the community to not have to ask anyone for money this year and to be able to put on the show. So it was a bit of a battle to convince some of the people, but we were successful and it was really good to have something in town. I'm appreciative of the PD because I know that there was a lot of traffic and I just appreciate them being there and being available in case anything went wrong. And if you do want to donate, it's Fortuna Fireworks Festival and it's PO Box 491 Fortuna. So if you want to send in a donation, feel free to do so. Otherwise, just accept it as a gift this year and we'll hitch up next year for some funding so that we can have next year's fireworks. I too would like to thank Mike Downey for his service to Fortuna and just really appreciate the time he spent. And just how easy he was to talk to and how he just came into the station and was able to address some of the issues that were there. Take a look at some of the procedures and just different things with a new new perspective. So I think that having him was really uplifting for our whole town, and I just appreciate that he was willing to do that. I had a redact meeting last week. We did adopt a budget that is a deficit budget, and we kind of took the same route that Fortuna took. We're going to look at it again in a couple of months to see if it's rebounding or, you know, what next steps might be for that. So I think that that's all I have to report as well. We do have a closed session item tonight. We have one item, public employment pursuant to Section 54957 of the California Government Code, titled Department Head, City Clerk, Human Resources, and Risk Manager. And I doubt that we have anyone on the line to make any comments about this. Is that correct, Sienna?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, so we need a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Good girl, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Sienna, do we have to do that or do we just say?
Do you have to do a roll? We'll do a roll. Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you.